Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of August 25, 2025 for viewers watching at home. Some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bass?
Present.
Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon is absent. Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut?
Here.
Chair Ferris?
Here. Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Zelaya Meliker. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Yes, we have a supplemental packet that has been distributed to the commission and posted in our cities, in the city's website related to the public hearing. Item 1A, thank you.
Thank you. Now's the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must fill out a speaker card in chambers or click Request to Speak on the Agenda to receive instructions before the public comment portion of the agenda is called. Speakers' remarks should be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member unless otherwise provided by the commission. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Screen will show you when the time you have remaining. Madam Secretary, do we have one member of the public on Zoom?
Yes, via Zoom.
Ms. Kathy Atwood?
Oh, no questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just as a note, I wanted to note you had specified you may want to speak to the upcoming items section. We normally don't have comments during that section, but now is the appropriate time. If you had any comments about any of our upcoming items?
Yeah, I signed up for it and I'll tune in tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the consent calendar with the minutes for July 7, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Do any of the fellow commissioners have any comments or motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve?
Great. Was there, were we all here at this last? You're the only one? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the, call the vote.
Commissioner Bass?
Yea.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Approved.
Commissioner Lanson?
Abstain.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries three to one, Commissioner Lanson abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Next is our Planning Commission public hearings. We're going to open the hearing for Raising Cane's with the clerk. Please open the public hearing.
One moment. Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider. Agenda item 7A, Special Use Permit SUP 2024-70023 and Protected Tree Permit PTP 2025-70042 to reestablish a drive-through restaurant within an existing 4,607 square foot former drive-through restaurant building, including a 12% reduction from the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code parking restrictions, requirements, removal of two parking spaces to accommodate landscape planner and parking area improvements, replacement of existing landscaping interior and exterior building upgrades, and encroachment into the protected zone of three oak trees and find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Sequel guidelines pursuant to Class 1, Section 15301A and E, existing facilities and Class 2, Section 15302C, replacement or reconstruction. Located within the mixed-use zone at 400 North Moore Park Road, the applicant is Lou Aaron Foster for Raising Cane's Restaurants LLC.
Okay, thank you. Presenting on behalf of staff, Senior Planner Carlos Contreras.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commission, and members of the public. The project before you tonight is a request to reestablish a drive-through restaurant use within an existing commercial building, including parking area modifications, interior and exterior building improvements, and encroachment into the protected zone of three oak trees at 400 North Moore Park Road. Before staff proceeds to the project details and evaluation, staff would like to go over the recommendation for the project that is before the Planning Commission tonight. The first is that the project is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act guidelines pursuant to Sections 15301A and E, existing facilities, and Section 15302C, replacement or reconstruction, and that the, that the Planning Commission approved the project applications to reestablish a drive-through restaurant use, including parking area reconfiguration, replacement of landscaping, and encroachment into the protected zone of three oak trees. As far as the applicant's requests tonight, these are the formal applications that have been submitted for the project. First is the Special Use Permit, which pertains to the proposed reestablishment of the drive-through restaurant use, including removal of two parking spaces resulting from the parking area reconfiguration, landscape planter improvements, replacement of landscaping, and building remodel. The requested 12% parking reduction is included in the Special Use Permit application. The project also includes a protected tree permit to allow encroachment into the three oak trees to accommodate parking area reconfiguration, relocation of menu boards, and the proposed 60 square foot addition for the proposed window on the northern building elevation. The Planning Commission review and approval is required for the project due to the following. One, Municipal Code Section 9-4.2701C, which requires a use that has been discontinued for more than 90 days to conform to the regulations of the zone in which it is proposed. In this case, it's the mixed-use zone standards. The second, Municipal Code Section 4.2104.5 requires a Special Use Permit for the, for the proposed drive-through use within the mixed-use zone and requires Planning Commission review and consideration. And the third reason, under Municipal Code Section 4.2803A2, the commission is empowered, has the authority to approve the subject SUP application, provided findings can be made for the project inclusive of the requested 12% parking reduction and also the shared parking agreement for the shopping center. The project includes oak tree encroachments, and since at least one application requires Planning Commission review, all associated entitlements are brought forward for consideration for the Planning Commission tonight. Here is the site. The site has a mixed-use general plan land use designation and is zoned mixed use. Here's the site aerial on the right-hand side. As shown here, the subject site is bounded by Moore Park Road to the west and Brazil Street to the north. The site is surrounded by existing commercial uses in the vicinity of the site. You have commercial uses to the north, east, and to the west. The nearest residential uses are more than 200 feet to the east beyond the existing shopping center. As far as the project background, in 1964, the shopping center was approved under Ventura County jurisdiction. In April of 1995, there was a planned development major modification and also a SUP that was approved for the Mimi's Cafe that was there in the past. And then in August of 2021, the city approved the construction of Amy's Drive-Thru Restaurant at the subject property. And then in February of 2024, Amy's Drive-Thru did cease operations. Subsequently thereafter, in April of 2024, the city adopted an ordinance establishing the mixed-use zone standards on the subject site, which required a SUP for the, the project. And then in October of 2024, the applicant team submitted the Special Use Permit to reestablish the drive-through restaurant at the subject site. As far as existing conditions, again, under Amy's Drive-Thru, the drive-through facility was constructed in 2021. Here, as demonstrated on this photograph, you have site access directly to the subject property at the southwest portion of the site. As you make your way down the drive aisle to the east, you have the double stacking lanes identified here in the green. And then in the blue is the existing pickup and pay window for the, for the project. And then in the orange here, I identify the vehicle waiting areas for those vehicles that have to wait a little bit longer to receive their food. And then here's the existing outdoor seating area adjacent to North Moore Park Road along the western portion of the site. And here in the red, I outline the area of the parking lot south of the building where the proposed parking stalls and planter will be reconfigured for the proposed project. And finally, in the purple, identify here the proposed 60 square foot addition for the proposed pay window. And this is a photograph of the site, of the existing condition. On the top left, looking towards northeast is as you enter the subject site towards the drive-through building. On the bottom left, you have the outdoor seating area. This view is from Moore Park Road looking towards the east. And on the top right, you have the view looking north as you access the double stacking lanes. And then on the bottom right, you have the view looking towards the west. This is the drive aisle where the proposed parking area reconfiguration will result as a, as a proposal of the project. As far as the proposed project design, the subject site will substantially be the same as was or as is existing. There are some modifications that I'm going to outline here. In the green is the relocation of the menu board associated with the project. And you have that 60 square foot addition for the pay window that's along Brazil Street. And then you have the existing outdoor seating area, which is going to be reduced in area to accommodate the proposed use. And then in the blue is a new pedestrian path of travel that will be provided from the new parking area to the building to the north. And here in the red, I highlight the reconfiguration of the parking stalls. This is in an effort to improve access to the, to the double stacking lanes and access and circulation and queuing as a result of the proposed drive-through. As shown here, the, the landscape planter is going to be relocated to the north and you have access to the stalls from the southern drive aisle on the adjacent shopping center. Here, we have the proposed stacking design. As identified here in the blue, it's the phase one. This is the non-peak operating hours for Raising Cane's. It accommodates, this phase one accommodates up to 18 vehicles on non-peak standard hours. In the red boxes there, I identify again the pay window, which is going to be added to improve efficiency, and also the pickup window, and also the waiting stalls for the vehicles will also be maintained for the project. In the purple is Phase Two. This is supposed to be their peak hour operations from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, lunch hour, and from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM approximately for the dinnertime of customers. Phase Two will consist of the 18 vehicles identified in the blue and also the additional nine within that drive aisle for Phase Two. As you can see here, the, with the reconfiguration of the parking area, those nine vehicles will not be obstructing those parking stalls on the site. And then Phase Three is the, the extreme condition. This is, this happens rarely. It's going to be occasional, maybe once or twice a year for like an anniversary or some type of special event, but the applicant would have certain operational features applied to the project to ensure that the circulation would not be obstructed on the subject property. It's important to note that the double lane ordering, ordering configuration allows an order board for each lane. This increases the number of customers processed through the order board portion of the drive-through and keeps vehicles moving efficiently. With the added efficiency of having two preview boards, two order boards, and the ability to bypass customers taking a longer than average time to order, the service rate increases compared to a single order board. Based on the stacking and queuing study, the applicant proposes to implement various operational features to provide an improved drive-through operation, including handheld tablets for ordering, mobile ordering and pickup, drive-through waiting stalls, train crew members to manage traffic and circulation, off-duty police officers as needed for special events, and also a parking management plan. Again, as far as the Phase Two, which is the peak hours of operation for them, for the lunch, lunch crowd and also the dinner crowd, you're going to have these specific measures applied for the project and will be included in the conditions of approval for the operational plan. That is two crew members deployed for handheld tablet ordering, a crew member deployed and staged to direct traffic. You'd have a crew member that will be stationed at the pickup window, a crew member at the drive-through entrance, which will help direct customers as they circulate through the property. You'd have cane staff that will be parking outside of the subject area within the shopping center where the parking stalls are less utilized. And also the new pedestrian path that they're proposing that bisects that, that Phase Two stacking and queuing, and the southern parking area, area would improve circulation on the site as well. As far as building design, it's basically going to be minor improvements. The, the only addition to the building is where I identify there on the north, top north elevation in purple, the, the proposed pay window, that's only 60 square feet. As shown here, is going to be compatible with the existing building. And then, you know, you're going to have the building be refurbished, new colors that are consistent with buildings in this, in the area. Here in the blue, I identify the outdoor seating area, and then you have entrances at the, along Moore Park Road at the west elevation, and you also have a building entrance within the parking area just south of the building. Again, the, the improvements are minimal and the majority of the project will include new colors. As far as the parking goes, based on the proposed design with the parking reconfiguration, there will be 47 parking spaces that would be provided on the subject site. Per the Municipal Code, this proposed use requires 32 parking spaces. That's one space for every 45 square feet of customer service area. The project also includes an additional 10 parking spaces parked at a ratio of one space for every 250 square feet of gross area. That's for like the freezer storage, the kitchen, the restrooms. And then the project also includes 11 parking spaces for the outdoor seating area. The outdoor seating area is 498 square feet. And so with the 53 parking spaces that are required per the Municipal Code for the project, that specific parcel only provides 47 spaces, so it's deficient by six spaces. However, in combination with the overall shopping center, which provides for a shared parking and access agreement, a total of 594 spaces are provided on-site. The Raising Cane's project and with the existing restaurant and retail uses at the site require 540 spaces, meaning that there will be a surplus of parking provided at the shopping center. As far as operations, staffing will be provided at 15 full-time and part-time employees, 13 to 15 crew members, and two managers would be available per shift. As far as security, there will be onsite cameras required showing exterior activity within internal display videos. And Ventura County Fire, sorry, Ventura County Sheriff's Department required 360-degree view around the facility as part of the conditions of approval. And also as far as the hours of operation, they are going to operate seven days a week, 9:00 AM until 1:00 AM Monday to Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM Friday and Sunday. These hours are consistent with other similar drive-through locations in the vicinity of the project site. As far as the protected tree permit that is before the Planning Commission tonight, as I mentioned earlier, there will be three encroachments into the protected zone, minor encroachments into the protected zone of the oak trees that are existing on the property. As I identify here, oak tree number one is just north of the drive-through lane circled here. This is a tree that was planted as a result of the Amy's Drive-Thru as a, as a replacement oak tree. However, it's still going to be protected and we have to make sure that the proposed 60 square foot building addition doesn't compromise the integrity of that oak tree. Oak tree number two would be encroached on as shown here. That's for the relocation of the drive-through menu board. The applicant team is modifying the location of that menu board by replacing the base. And so staff coordinated with the city's street consultant to make sure that those, the relocation of that menu board wouldn't compromise the life of the replacement oak tree there. And then the third oak tree that's going to be encroached on as a result of the project is this, tree number three. This is within that reconfigured parking area. As shown here, that, that landscape strip would be relocated to the northern side or the right side of that vehicle. This planter area would stay in place and the oak tree would be protected in place as a result of the project, so they're not going to remove it. As far as public correspondence, staff did provide for legal notification that was posted on the subject property, and property owners within 500 feet of the, of the site were notified of the proposed project. Staff did receive a couple of email correspondence, one from a community member in support of the project citing that the closest Raising Cane's is Oxnard and that providing for Raising Cane's in Thousand Oaks would, would improve the community and also add to the local labor force. And then staff did receive an inquiry on the oak tree impacts. This community member did inquire with staff about the, the scope of the work of the project, the, the impacts of the oak trees, where the oak trees existing on the subject property, and whether or not the proposed project would require removal of the oak trees. Staff did respond to this inquiry and explain that the, the encroachments are minimal to the, to the existing oak trees that are on-site, and based on the city consultant's review of the proposed project, there would be no impacts to those oak trees. In conclusion, staff has determined that the project as designed is consistent with the general plan. The project meets all development standards for setbacks, heights, parking, landscaping, and design, and is consistent with prior approvals. The project has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, Public Works Department, Police Department, Ventura County Sheriff's Department, and with the incorporation of the recommended conditions, the project would not be detrimental to public health and safety or general welfare. Further, furthermore, the project is surrounded by commercial and all operations will occur within the existing building. Site modifications will improve vehicle and pedestrian circulation, and the proposed hours of operations are consistent with other similar drive-through uses in the vicinity of the subject site. In addition, conditions of approval are recommended to ensure the facility does not cause disturbances to adjacent businesses or neighboring properties. cause disturbances to adjacent businesses or neighboring properties. And the project was analyzed for conformance with the California Environmental Quality And use of the categorical exemption applies to this project. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution finding the project categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA and approve a special use permit 2024-70023 and PTP 2025-70042, subject to the conditions of approval. Before staff concludes the presentation, I would like to note that a memo has been provided to the planning commission in response to the request from the applicant to revise the language of condition number 27 regarding outdoor seating requirements. The revision removes specific table and chair configuration and instead restricts outdoor dining area to the 1,051 square feet that are on the project plan set. This change has no development standard implications since the existing outdoor dining area has been evaluated and accounted for as part of the project. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Just a noted clarification, the intent is that the revision from the supplemental packet is part of the staff recommendation to us tonight. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Are there any questions or comments of staff from commissioners? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Contreras, for your report. My first question actually is kind of the first thing you talked about is why are we here? Just so I understand, so by virtue of the zoning map we passed as part of the general plan update, there was a prohibition against drive-throughs and mixed-use properties? Would that be correct?
Not that there was a prohibition. Once the general plan update came along, the subject property received a category of a mixed-use land use designation, and then to be consistent with the zoning map, it was, it's now zone mixed use. And under that specific development standard in the mixed-use zone now, a special use permit is required with review by the planning commission.
Okay.
Prior, it was a C3 commercial, which didn't require planning commission.
Okay. And then, the next point was your last point, which was the item 27. I know it sounds like it's been moved to a square footage. I'm mathematically challenged exactly how many tables and chairs then would fit in that? Is it matched then ultimately what the applicant asked for, I think, in one of the other documents we have as part of our supplemental information?
Because of the parking calculation for outdoor space, where we require that parking be parked at a ratio of one space for every 45 square feet, so whether or not you have 10 tables or four tables in a certain configuration, it's not going to impact the total parking required because we're using square footage as in not number of seats or number of tables.
I get that. I guess I'm just trying to conceptually understand is does the square footage match with what the applicant is asking for? It be changed to, or is it not consistent?
Oh, yes. The request still matches the proposed project outdoor seating area. It's not going to change for purposes of parking or purposes of this project. They're not, they're not going to add any additional square footage to the outdoor seating. They're tied to what they have on the project plan set of 1,051 square feet.
Okay. My next question is again is a bit of a clarification. Looking at the report, there's, the definition of peak time seems to have two different definitions. One is the hours that you mentioned, 11:30 to 1:30 and then 5:00 to 8:00, but then, two paragraphs down, it says, "Overall visitor activity expected to occur after 8:00 p.m." So I'm kind of trying to understand exactly how are we defining peak hours, especially for purposes of moving this planter, which from one of the supplemental paperwork, it looks like the Ross district manager was saying would create a lot of upheaval for their customers. So again, the question being is how are we defining peak hours?
Thanks, Commissioner Lanson. The definition of peak is actually from the operational standards that are operational plan that the applicant has submitted to us. So when they expect to have the most visitors is when we qualify the peak hour to be. So the stacking and the queuing lanes, that's all provided by the applicant. That's all representative of what they expect to have operationally.
And to that extent, do they expect more than 18 cars in any given period of time, which is why we're going to a process to move the planter?
Yeah, the 18 cars is what they can stack right now in the two-lane configuration. The spillover is nine more cars, which goes into the drive aisle lane, which currently the way this parking space are configured, the landscape planner would create a conflict with the cars that are parked and try and get out or get in while that spillage happens. So then, the other nine cars goes around to the other drive aisle to the south.
All right, so we can let the applicant speak to that, but the Ross's comment about how it would disrupt their customers, exactly how long would this reconfiguration take and what would be involved?
Staff doesn't have the timelines for developing or redeveloping that parking area. It's going to have to go through the standard post-approval process, receiving the building permits to propose this new parking area. Staff already has worked with Department of Public Works for drainage and improvement, so the plan is already ready to go in concept. It's just a matter of the applicant team how fast they want to move forward with the construction of this project.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time.
Vice Chair Tyler Kettle.
A couple points of clarification, and then I'll probably reserve most of my questions for the applicant. Okay, so where did we get the stacking queue data? Where, maybe I missed that in the packet. Where's that coming from? Who's providing that?
Oh, the applicant team did provide the stacking and queuing study, and that data does include existing facilities that are referenced in the study itself. You have the cities of Foothill Ranch, Orange, and Huntington Beach, which were incorporated because they have similar double stacking design and within shopping centers for the proposed project.
And with Amy's, did we have double stacking with Amy's before?
Yes. The configuration of double stacking is already existing there as is, and it was provided for Amy's drive-through, correct?
Has anyone, and again, this might be a naive question, has anyone compared the stacking study that Amy's did with the stacking study that Raising Canes did?
Staff did do a comparison between Amy's drive-through operation and Raising Canes, and based off of Raising Canes stacking and queuing study, and then their peak hours, being that there'd be an average of 23 to 25 vehicles, as it demonstrates on the plan that area to Phase 2 stacking and queuing, that is the standard peak operation for Raising Canes. Staff did verify that under Amy's drive-through, their peak operation was only within Phase 1, that blue area there. So the spillover was their worst-case scenario, like for a special event. In this particular case, the standard daily operation between lunchtime and dinner is that spillover in the purple identified in the drive-through plan.
Okay. I'll reserve the rest of my questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Any other questions? I did have some before we go to the applicant. So my understanding, Amy's drive-through used to have, as we've just found out, double stacking before. It was up in operations, now closed down, and because it's been out of operations for over 90 days, it's non-conforming, so that's why the applicant has to come back before us for a special use permit. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, because this is a drive-through and they're kind of coming back and it's sort of, it's technically, like one could argue, it's not new, but in some ways it is new because they are the ones asking for it for this particular operation. The reason I'm bringing that preamble is that in order for me to get comfortable with general plan consistency, there's a couple sections that in the land use, the new land use element, which really kind of, especially in the mixed-use portion, is intended to help facilitate pedestrian circulation. Land Use 5.7, I think, which discourages drive-through, in fact discourages new drive-through facilities to facilitate pedestrian things in mixed-use areas. And then, 12.9 talks about the limiting idling to where in some ways backing up of drive-through facilities helps to produce that. That's kind of highlighted in our next project report that we're going to talk about the zoning update, so that you all clued me into that. But I just want to get an understanding of how I can come to an understanding that is consistent with the general plan when these are two policies that might give me a little, one could argue the other way.
Yeah, so basically, we look at it from the perspective starting off that it is a mixed-use land use designation, and there are specific policies that either encourage or discourage certain type of design. Then we revert back to the zoning code, which has the specific development standards to either support or not support the project. In this particular case, because the applicant team is improving that parking area and the new stacking and queuing design will not be impactful or less impactful in circulation for both pedestrian and vehicle circulation on-site and off-site, staff has identified that the proposed project as designed is in compliance with the general plan. Again, if the general plan discourages new drive-through facilities, this is a new drive-through use. We're not looking to have a new building and a whole site modified just to accommodate a proposed drive-through facility. So that's the way to kind of distinguish between the two, that this is not a ground-up construction proposing a new drive-through, that it's an existing building designed for a specific drive-through use that has been redesigned to reduce impacts on circulation, which is why we are supporting the project tonight.
Okay.
For consistency with the general plan.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, that was, I'm done with my questions, Commissioner Lanson, if you'd like.
So, in the existing project in regards to pedestrian flow, are there even sidewalks in this shopping area? Because I live by here, so I mean, there really isn't pedestrian flow existing, so I don't think it would be like to the point of what you were saying. It's that it wouldn't inhibit existing flow or discourage, and actually by changing around the planters, that helps with the flow to the other businesses for people walking. Correct? Or am I wrong? Because there's no sidewalks other than along the exact building.
Yeah, you only have sidewalks along the perimeter, along Moore Park Road and Brazil, and when the proposed project came in for Amy's drive-through, we had them provide pedestrian, improve pedestrian connectivity from Moore Park Road to the site. In this particular case, we're going to improve pedestrian access by providing that new path to travel with the new planter design, meaning that if you go park in that southern parking area and you want to access the building, you're not going to have a difficulty getting to the entrance of the building, because now you're going to have pedestrian path with directional signs.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we've had a few here today, so that's great. Let's go to the applicant. So actually, yeah, we'll go to the applicant's representatives. Dana Sales, hopefully I pronounced that correctly. If you can cover the podium, state your name, city of residence. You have 15 minutes, and the remaining time should be available to you. Should be now.
That's us on. Wonderful. I'll introduce myself, and I understand staff will queue the slides. Oh, Mandy, could you do this for me? One second. Pull up the other. Okay. Good evening for the record. My name is Dana Sales with 360. Our office is at 3280 Motor Avenue in Los Angeles on behalf of Raising Canes. Here tonight with several representatives from Canes, you have Kelly Agnor and Angel Robinson on the development team, Ken Ellings with the construction team, as well as our civil engineer Jonathan Williamson from Kimberly Horn, who can answer any technical questions. Next slide. Raising Canes itself was founded in 1996 by Todd Graves outside of the campus of LSU in Louisiana with a mission to open a chicken finger restaurant. During construction of that first site, Todd's yellow Labrador, Raising Kane, was on-site the entire time, and thus Kane 1 and now Kane 3 continues to be the namesake and the mascot for the company. Next slide. Canes is an employee-led company where equality is paramount. Everyone from the cashiers to the executive team are trained as fry cooks and cashiers. They go through training each year so that everybody understands the operation from the ground up. The company also is unique in that it creates each location for the city in which it's located. There's no formulaic approach, there's no one-size-fits-all, which allows them to build both new construction and as well as occupy non-traditional spaces. Their team is focused on product excellence, ensuring that design, construction, and the operation of their restaurants help to resolve and mitigate existing problem issues where they exist and ensure that any new operations are synergistic with neighboring businesses and uses. Next slide. Raising Canes is known for its simplistic but popular menu, limited to only five items. All items are cooked to order with no customization and multiple menu items to slow down delivery. This puts the restaurant at the top of the market in terms of speed of service, with their current average speed of 2 minutes and 28 seconds from order to delivery. That demonstrates their always fresh, never frozen motto to customers. This focused menu also allows them to manage their drive-through operations faster than any competitors in the marketplace. Why this site? As I said, Canes doesn't have a standard prototype for the restaurants, and so they can locate wherever appropriate, as well as locations where they can individually brand their stores. This location will be uniquely branded for Thousand Oaks. The site at Moore Park in Brazil will be the first location in the broader Cano Valley. Canes identified this location in early 2024, shortly after Amy's ceased operation after only one year. The site was attractive because it was a brand-new restaurant with only two years, it was only two years old at the time, and thus was built to current building and zoning codes and would require little to no construction. The property at an acre is ideal to accommodate the new drive-through prototypes in the quick-serve restaurant industry with the double lane drive-through and vehicular parking substantially in excess of code requirements on the entire center. All of these make locations such as this ideal for them to be able to move in quickly and swiftly with minimal risk through extensive approval processes and minimal capital expenditures that you typically incur with ground-up construction. Also, the thing that's nice about this is that there's no public access to the drive-through from any other public streets. It's all internal to the shopping center. Next slide. The property itself is accessed from one main shopping center entrance off of Brazil Street with a two-way access south of the main entry, and that two-way drive provides access to 47 on-site parking spaces designated for patron and employees, as well as short-term mobile and pickup orders. Drive-through access from the South Westerly Drive will provide access to the drive-through as staff explained. The height of the building currently is 26 feet 2 inches. The building floor area is 4,120 square feet. The existing building covers approximately only 9% of the lot, and as staff said, the project is proposing a very small addition of 60 square feet to accommodate a second drive-through pay window at the northeastern corner of the building. The project is also reducing the size of the outdoor patio by approximately 171 square feet, and together, this represents a de-intensification of the site for purposes of parking requirements. And there's no other substantial changes to any of the development standards that are already in place from when the building was built. The landscape plan includes modifications to the existing landscaping previously installed by Amy's. The project proposes 170 new plants, including a variety of shrubs, perennial succulents, grasses, all with low-intensive water classifications. No oak trees or other protected trees will be displaced as part of the project. As staff indicated, we are also seeking a protected tree permit for several encroachments into the drip line of several young oaks, which were all planted as replacement trees when Amy's was originally built. First is that drive-through window, as staff indicated, the northwestern corner of the site. It should be noted that that window is not within the encroachment zone of that protected tree along Brazil Street as it is more than five feet outside of the canopy. Nonetheless, in conjunction with staff, we felt it was important that this was included in the protective tree permit to ensure that that was being protected. The second is from the replacement of the menu board, just a clarification, it's not a relocation, we're just replacing it in the exact same location with a smaller menu board for Canes, and that is proximate as well to one of the replacement trees that Amy's installed. And again, the third is triggered due to redesign of the parking lot, which we'll discuss shortly. The oak trees in question are still very young and they don't have large established root systems or developed canopies that will be impacted by this project, and therefore, none of the project improvements should impact either the root systems or the canopies. In terms of design, Canes spent a lot of time in 2024 to develop a building exterior in keeping with the architectural style and character of Thousand Oaks. The renovation provides an elevated modern take on traditional rustic design of the existing building by utilizing more rustic tones and incorporating wood paneling. The building elevation includes a variety of colors, including wood siding, muted neutral accents, gray and gray exterior finish. Bolder and darker colors are only limited to accent colors, which will complement the architectural relief and add visual and add visual interest to break up the horizontal building plane. The architectural elements are provided as part of the building design that are reminiscent with Raising Cane's brand identity, but also honor the rustic architectural character of Thousand Oaks. As previously mentioned by staff, and I apologize if I repeat some of the things about the queuing plan, but I think we're going to talk about it, so I'm going to go through a couple of things one more time. One of the selling points of the site was that it did have an existing double-lane drive-through, which offers increased queuing capacity and faster service for customers. The configuration with two lanes and a separate order board for each lane increases the capacity of customers through the ordering process over single-lane drive-through designs. The data that was collected, just to answer that question, is based on Cane's operation of over 600 stores nationally, about 80% of which have drive-throughs. So it is anecdotal evidence of how they operate their stores, and we're happy to answer any of those questions as they come about. As staff indicated as well, during primary operations, the restaurant will have an 18-car queuing capacity that currently exists. The keep-clear lane will allow for better pedestrian access to the site as well, and enable easier access to parking spaces to the south. The restaurant will employ 12 to 15 full and part-time employees during this time, as well as implementing other operational features to expedite the drive-through operations, including handheld tablets, mobile ordering, crew members, and off-duty police officers. Phase 2, as we said, will operate during the lunch hour and in the dinner hour. And during that time, the drive-through will be expanded to accommodate 27 cars. At that point, as staff said, we'll have two additional crew members onsite to facilitate taking customer orders, and particularly one to help assist cars coming out of the parking area to the south of the trash enclosure adjacent to the drive-through. And finally, we have a phase 3 drive-through configuration that's really for special events, that can accommodate an extra nine cars for a total of 36 cars in the queue. Those would only occur at a few times of the year during a grand opening or other special event. And that overfuel stack in the drive aisle to the south, managed by either off-duty police officers or additional crew member traffic. As also indicated, the existing shopping center remains overparked, and therefore overflow queue should not have any negative impacts to customers' ability to access other tenant stores within the center. As stated by staff as well, Cane's took control of this property assuming that, as a less-than-three-year-old development, only minimal tenant improvements would be required to take over Amy's. However, due to recent changes in the Thousand Oaks general plan, the zoning was changed from C3 community shopping center to mixed-use, which does require that special use permit that we're here seeking today. Currently, the existing building is constructed to be fully compliant with the standards of that C3 zone. And in any other jurisdiction, the building would be considered legally non-conforming and permitted to continue operations so long as there were no changes to layout intensification of use or other fundamental zoning parameters. However, because the municipal code stipulates that a discontinuance of the non-conforming use for more than 90 days shall constitute abandonment and termination of that non-conforming use, the use now needs to conform to the existing zoning classification, which is the mixed-use zone. The challenge here is that there's no use that could ever re-establish its use within 90 days, given the length of time for even a permitting process. And so, any use that is in this situation will have to go through this process. It does place the burden on applicants to go through a new approval process like this for a use that was legally existing, fully compliant, and operational within the past 18 months. Nonetheless, in October of last year, we filed the special use application to re-establish drive-through use that is in front of you today. As staff said as well, the project qualifies for a categorical exemption. And with two statutory SECA exemptions, the project can have no environmental impacts and nothing that required mitigation. There's also nothing in the record to demonstrate that the minor improvements by Cane's demonstrate an exception to the categorical exemptions that require any mitigation. Despite this, staff again required a stacking and queuing study for the project to demonstrate there's no spillover impact specifically onto public streets, which would be Brazil and Moore Park. And after submitting our initial stacking plan earlier this year, we've received substantial comments and concerns about potential conflicts between the existing parking spaces to the south and our overflow queue operations, which we've been talking about. We did not have any concerns about spillover onto the public streets because there is no drive-through access proximate to either Moore Park or Brazil. We went back and forth with staff for about five months in an effort to limit invasive onsite construction. However, Cane's finally agreed to reconstruct a portion of the existing parking lot to flip the configuration of the 24 most southerly parking spaces to alleviate any perception of potential impact from onsite queuing due to the existing design of the parking lot and drive-through. And as a result of this parking lot configuration, the project is unfortunately requesting a parking reduction for the loss of several spaces that need to occur in that area as a byproduct of new drainage requirements that are required within that landscape buffer. However, as we stated before, the parking within the greater center is still overparked, and thus this minimal parking reduction should have no substantial impact on overall greater parking lot operations within the shopping center. Also, just as a reminder, the reconfiguration also results in the need to protect one of these young oaks in place during those construction activities. And construction activities for this parking lot are estimated to take approximately three months just for the site work and the new drainage that's required. Lastly, over the past year, Cane's has remained very excited about serving the Thousand Oaks and Greater Cano Valley community, and the opportunity to take over this prime restaurant site. We hope that you agree that the renovation plan in front of you will upgrade, beautify, and improve access and circulation and pedestrian safety onsite. We're very proud of the substantial design and programming efforts of this restaurant, and we urge your support of our entitlement requests today. With that, our entire team is available for questions, and we're happy to clarify anything that might need to be addressed. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions of the applicant or applicant's staff? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your and Raising Cane's interest in our city and potentially bringing this concept to us. I appreciate your interest in the city. Did you, I noticed in the supplemental report, you submitted a letter with a requested change. I don't know if you've seen what the staff supplemented?
We have.
And I wanted to get your input as to if that revision that they made is acceptable.
We're in agreement. We did talk with staff earlier, and even though we submitted suggested alternative language, staff's recommendation is what we would support as well.
Okay, so as to item 27, you're okay with the way that the staff revised that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other provisions of the staff report that you are not in agreement with? Or are you in agreement with the rest of what's in there?
I think we have worked through modified language with staff leading up to today, and the conditions as proposed are acceptable.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehart?
I have a couple of questions, and again, I don't know that it changes anything. But, so when you guys took this project on, and again, this is just a matter of interest for businesses in our city, because we hear about this all the time. How much is this impacting kind of your bottom line as you're trying to get into this project? How much has this delayed you in terms of the parking? Having to shift around the parking, and then I have a question about the parking.
So when we started this process, our assumption from initial diligence with staff was that we were going to be at about four months on the approval process. We're at almost 11 now, so it's had an impact of more than a half a year. And the reconfiguration of the parking lot is about a half a million dollars that the project wasn't originally anticipating taking on.
And one of the things that you guys were saying was that you anticipated during peak hours, you'd have about 15 employees at that time? And again, this is just an observation. When I'm looking at what you're being asked to reconfigure, it's about 18 spaces. And isn't, that could have been someplace that your employees? Where are your employees going to park?
There's 24 spaces. And we did, in our initial proposal, before we agreed to reconfigure the parking, did identify that those would be long-term for employees as one of our proposed operational. And it was something that I believe Cane's was still intending to do, is generally the employees park the furthest away so that patrons can have closest access to the restaurant. It's still the intention, but that was our first proposal back, was just to make those long-term employee parking spaces, particularly the ones closest to the drive-through entry, because those would be the least accessible.
Yeah, it makes sense, yeah.
I also failed to, there's also three current clean-air-vehicle parking spaces in that area that will also have to be relocated.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any questions at all?
In terms of the length of the construction, you said three months, or?
Just three months for the parking lot area. There was a slide, potentially we can go back. So the area of the parking, right, the area of work is the parking spaces, but a portion of the drive aisle to the south will have to be fenced off because there's grading activities that have to occur. There will also be grading that has to occur in the other drive aisle in order to get all of that to work. And so that site work is about three months of work, independent of anything that would otherwise be done to the building, which is really facade work and interior. There was no other work that was planned.
Any other questions? I have none, thank you very much.
Chair, I did have.
Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair. As to just the parking and the configuration, the stacking, so it sounds like you're, you basically understand and agree that 18 spaces and then the nine is what normally would be appropriate in terms of what the potential use is during peak hours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, nothing further.
Go in once. We got it. Thank you, you'll have the opportunity to rebut at the end. We do have two-speaker cards. Each will have five minutes. First Diane McKay, followed by Danielle Borja. If you could state your name and city of residence, please.
Hi, good evening, my name's Diane McKay, and I'm the owner of Mustang Marketing. And we were employed about two and a half weeks ago by the applicant, which, as you probably know, is a little bit late for us. But it isn't surprising, there's retail stores in the center, and they're not very thrilled about the parking lot being involved in such a way. They also aren't noticed because they're tenants, they're not owners. And so, it took me some time to track down someone at Ross who actually had the authority to write the email that you got today. I would like to at least consider, as a small business owner, these business owners have been struggling. They went through the construction of Amy's. Now we're going to ask them to go through what I consider to be extensive construction again with this parking lot. They wondered if we'd consider the restaurant and leaving the parking lot. I've been out there to visit it. It's not just like flipping parking spots around and putting a planter. There's like an 18-inch differential in. So it's going to be extensive grading. I trust our engineer, that he says it's three months, if it's three months. But I've never seen very many projects come in on time. Maybe they have miracle workers. So anyways, a small business owner, I would just like to think about that, I'm sure there's other businesses out there in these non-conforming ways because we just made a big change to our general plan. But this is a brand-new business that was just put in there. I imagine some of you actually approved this business with the queuing and how it was. And so, as a member of this community and business owner, I'm in favor of being a business-friendly climate. I would like to see if there's a way, I mean Carlos, he's a fantastic planner, worked with him many times. But this seems like a discretionary decision to change that parking. And I would ask that we reconsider that piece of it for the businesses that are there and have been struggling, as most retail has been. I bet that Cane's prides themselves that they're not going to go out of business. I know that, you know, should they go out of business, then they're going to have other things grandfathered in. But I know the work for your city is to have it look beautiful now and in the future. But I also think it is to make it a business-friendly city so that businesses want to come here, keep our economic engine going. So it is with respect that I ask you to reconsider and consider the other businesses and what the construction might do to them. A win-win may be the restaurant without redoing the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Borja?
Good evening, Sheriff Ferris and Planning Commissioners. Danielle Borja, President/CEO of the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce, Thousand Oaks resident, and here on behalf of the chamber and our board in support of the applicant this evening. I personally first discovered Raising Cane's when I was on a trip to Albuquerque a few years ago. And last year, I actually had the chance to visit one of their flagship restaurants on Broadway in Nashville. Beyond their popular menu, Raising Cane's is widely recognized for investing and supporting their local communities where they operate, and this location will be no different. With Thousand Oaks centrally positioned between their existing restaurants in Oxnard and Northridge, this location is perfectly suited to serve residents throughout the broader region. Following the significant improvement to bring Amy's Drive-Thru to life after the demolition of Amy's Cafe, which I actually previously worked at, the chamber is pleased to see such a strong brand ready to make use of this modern, existing, double-lane drive-through site. Extensive analysis has been conducted on stacking and queuing, including studies at comparable Southern California locations to ensure smooth operations. Raising Cane's also operates with a simple-five menu, no modifications, which allows them to be uniquely efficient in handling large volumes of drive-through traffic. Let's remember, and we've talked about this a lot this evening, that this project is only before Planning Commission tonight because of two very small technical requirements. A 2% parking reduction that exceeds the Community Development Director's approval authority, and the fact that the previous drive-through had been discontinued for more than 90 days in a mixed-use zone. I worked on the general plan extensively, and the intention of the mixed-use zoning in the general plan was to provide flexibility, not impede natural redevelopment opportunities, adding half a million dollars to a cost of a project and a six-month delay. Raising Cane's has brought this project forward in good faith, and we encourage you to welcome this well-respected brand into our business community without unnecessary investment and delay. A location that's a natural fit for their operations and a highly awaited dining option for our residents throughout Cano Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go back to staff for any follow-up comments.
Yes, staff would like to mention that, that yes, the project was noticed to the adjacent surrounding property owners within 500 feet. It didn't go to the actual tenants. That's the responsibility of the owner, to provide tenants their notifications. As far as the approval process goes, yes, Amy's Drive-Thru was not approved by the Planning Commission. Again, under the C3 zone, that was an administrative approval for a development permit minor modification. And the only reason the project is before you tonight is because under the mixed-use zone and mixed-use land use designation, the proposed project does require a special use permit to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. Staff would just like to mention that the basis for the recommendation to support the project tonight is looking at the evaluation of the stacking and queuing site that was provided for the project. In comparison with Amy's Drive-Thru and Raising Cane's, Amy's Drive-Thru had a less impactful queuing operation than the proposed operation based on the data that's been submitted to date for the proposed project, for the Raising Cane's project. Staff did visit other locations. We did visit the site at the city of Oxnard, which mirrors pretty much what is being proposed today. Again, because this Raising Cane's project doesn't anticipate, at their peak standard hours, daily, right, between lunch and dinner, 27 vehicles to obstruct those existing parking stalls. It makes those parking stalls essentially obsolete. So in this case, staff worked with the applicant team to invert that little stalls, improve stacking and circulation to reduce impacts on the long-term perspective, not only for the site, but also for the shopping center as well. And if staff can, I can go ahead and just show you, based on the site visit that we did for the project, I'll just demonstrate to you the site visit and how Oxnard, as it exists today, we did a visit that, Raising Cane's, during peak operations around 12:00 noon. And as shown here on the left-hand side, you can see that's the location of the building. And in the similar design here, you have the planter area inverted, meaning that if there's a spillover of those nine vehicles in Phase 2, they're not going to obstruct those vehicles that are going to be parked. And then you can see the double-stacking lanes there, and then also the pedestrian path. path bisecting the drive-thru to improve pedestrian circulation. Again, because this has worked in the city of Oxnard as far as their standard operation goes, the city of Thousand Oaks is looking to support the project based on the proposed redesign of that parking area. And again, being consistent with the city's general plan policies to improve pedestrian and vehicular circulation, and also in compliance with the city's zoning standards, staff supports the project as designed.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any follow-up questions, staff? Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut.
I'm going to be the fly in the ointment. Actually, I'm going to pull a McFerris here. I guess, I guess I'm just, again, because we're dealing with, with these incremental changes because of what we did with the zoning, I just, again, I go back to, and I do want to mention, I did have a conversation with Diane McKay, an ex parte conversation with Diane McKay about the overarching stuff, but mostly talking about parking. And I don't, I don't understand if the applicant could demonstrate to us that in fact they're going to put their employees in fifteen of those spaces, or even twenty of those spaces, that that wouldn't be something that we could, and again, I don't even know, what we're being asked to, to vote on tonight is the special use permit, and I don't know, because I don't know how all of this works, if that's even something that up here as commissioners we can ask you guys to do and kind of go, we don't want to keep going back to the drawing board because they've been delayed so much. So what I'm asking is, is do we have any discretion here at this point, or do we just have to approve it exactly as it's presented to us? That's what I mean by McFerris.
If staff could respond, that'd be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Kettlehut. The Commission does have a limited amount of discretion, this is a special use permit, so we can evaluate the project. The recommendation before you tonight from staff is based on the plan that we reviewed and the recommendation to invert that parking layout, so we don't have cars in conflict with the stacking area, so the cars can maneuver in and out of a parking space. It's difficult to control or regulate, limiting it to only two employees to park in those areas. There's, I doubt there's to be a monitor out there looking at, requiring a pass or some sort of parking permit. It's, even the employees are going to try to get out of those parking spaces, and will be obstructed by the driveline when it's stacking beyond the eighteen spaces in the double-stacking area. We felt from our visit from Oxnard, which has a very similar layout, that you could see the conflicts that were already existing. They had faux ballards blocking the drive aisle going into an adjacent bank site to keep the cars from stacking beyond their property and going into the other site, the bank site. We're trying to get ahead of it. We're trying to avoid those conflicts and those issues with the drive aisles competing with parking, pedestrian traffic, circulation for that site. So that's the reason for staff's recommendation, and our, our recommendation is predicated on that inversion of the parking layout. So that was part of what's before you tonight, is our evaluation of what would make this project actually work and function without competing with parking spaces, creating conflicts on the site.
Any other questions of staff? If I, if I may, I just wanted to, in some ways, ask staff to correct me if I'm mistaken, but my understanding with respect to your, your question is, what authority do we have? We, we can make a motion to deny, we can make a motion to approve, we can make a motion that includes addition, modification, deletion of any of the particular conditions we have that's our authority, but we risk the applicant not wanting to have that, we risk the appeal to the City Council. So I mean, those are some of the things, that's my correction, that's what is before us. So the question is, we just have to weigh what, what makes sense. City Attorney, is that a correct understanding of what we have in front of us?
Yeah, I think that's correct. I mean, to be honest, I'm slightly confused here, right? I see an applicant that's come forward with a project plan set and asking for Planning Commission's approval, and has indicated that they're acceptable with all the conditions. Is there a request on the applicant's part to modify the plan set at this juncture?
I haven't heard it. I'm just responding to Vice Chair's question, I think.
No, I, I haven't heard it, but what I'm, I'm asking kind of general questions, especially because we're dealing with this new mixed-use designation. And I think it's, it's, it's a little confusing for us, because this is the first time anything's come before us with respect to that. And so, yeah, no, we haven't heard that from the applicant at all, but I'm wondering, because we've had a couple speakers who've indicated that there are some of these possibilities, but that wasn't presented by staff and that wasn't presented by applicant. So I'm just, again, it's, it's kind of a point of clarification.
Any other final questions of staff? If not the applicant, you have the opportunity for rebuttal, you have five minutes, and if you'd like, please come back and restate your name, city, residence for the record.
I don't think I'm going to need five minutes. Again, Dana Sales for the record. Maybe I'll just sort of address this line of questioning, because there's not really a lot to respond to. Canes is very much looking forward to coming into this location, because as indicated, there are no stores really in the greater valley. Woodland Hills just opened, that's actually now the closest to here, and then Oxnard. One thing to note about Amy's, because they had this massive extensive menu, cars would sit there and wait for their turn to order, right? We don't have that issue. We also, and I don't know if it's in your packet, but just to point out, we actually submitted an exhibit of all of the drive-throughs in Thousand Oaks, including In-N-Out, Jack-in-the-Box, and Chick-fil-A. They all have drive-through and parking conflicts like this. They're, they all, that's just sort of the nature of drive-throughs. It's almost impossible to get parking layouts and drive-through queues in multi-tenant shopping centers perfect. To your question, we did not intend on doing this. If we were not where we are, we wouldn't. But it is important that Canes come into this community collaborative and work with staff and do what we can to alleviate any perception. And I use the word perception. I'm a thirty-year planner. I, I take land use law and all kinds of continuing education and SEQA and, and substantial evidence is a really big deal. One of our issues here is that we have an exemption, and there's no substantial evidence to show that we actually have an impact. So all of this is being done to mitigate perception and future perception. But you as a commission have, have that to consider. We have agreed to do this plan because Canes wants to move forward and get this restaurant operational. But it does have implications that we wouldn't otherwise take on and wouldn't otherwise be required of a use if we actually had a substantiated impact demonstrated by actual reports. We provided the data, we provided the, right, actually to be conservative and say, hey, this is what we think. We think when we open, lunchtime and dinnertime are going to be popular, because there are no other locations around here. Canes is in the process of working on additional locations in the valley, which also should take the pressure off of this, right? That's some of what they look to do, is co-locate so that that relief valve is there for, for impact. This site also does have a substantial amount of onsite dining, and they're investing a lot into a really beautiful outdoor patio so that people can come and sit. We've also heard a lot through working with staff, who've been wonderful to work with, by the way, thank you for everything, to Steve and Carlos, because they have been in the trenches with us this whole time, about making sure that this is a place where people can come and stay. We also heard a lot about this not wanting to be a transient shopping center, and so all of the investment that Canes is making is to ensure that actually people want to come and dine here, and that the drive-through is not the primary source of revenue for this location. Again, I'm happy to answer any other questions. I think we, we knew that this conversation would mostly be about the drive-through and the parking, but I want to reiterate how excited, right, that the entire team is about getting this location open, because vacancy doesn't help a city in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. At this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open the floor for discussion and/or motion. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Chair. And again, thank you for your interest in the city and for probably one of the best discussions and speeches with regard to partnering with the city as to a project, and I very much appreciate that. I cannot wait to see if this is a successful project, which probably leads you to the idea of where my thinking is. I believe that property always has to have its best use. Right now, it's an empty drive-through. That's not its best use. Its best use would be something, I think, exactly like this concept, even though there's a lot of chicken, there's more room for more chicken down Chicken Alley, or whatever you want to call it. And I think this would be a good, in fact, fantastic addition to the city with regard to partnering with various different businesses, and I think this is a great idea. I am concerned, as other commissioners have mentioned, with regard to the impact. I do appreciate your long-term discussion about partnering and perception and ultimately trying to make sure that you're being good with us, and hopefully staff has been good to you. I am concerned with regard to obviously the costs. And again, the Ross General Manager, or District Manager, it did indicate some impact on them. My hope is that will be minimal. But my, again, my hope at the, at the end of the day, this can be worked out productively and in a way that makes sense for everybody, and again, a long-term process. Again, I'm concerned, but it sounds like you're okay with that. So with that, I will make the motion to adopt the attached resolution, which is Attachment Four to our, our report, based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained therein, specifically finding that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines pursuant to Class I, Section 15301A and E, as to existing facilities in Class II, Section 15302C, as to replacement or reconstruction, and approving SUP 2024-70023 and PTP 2025-70042, subject to the one modification the staff made to category twenty, or item twenty-seven.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any comments on the motion? Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut.
I would support the motion, and I do want to, I do want to thank staff. It's, it's hard for you guys, too, because everything has changed. And so now we're, we're playing with a new rulebook, basically. And so I appreciate, and I really appreciate your, your honesty with us, because it's sometimes hard for business owners to come in here and really say those kinds of things to us. It's, it's imperative that we hear that. We hear it when we're out wandering around the businesses and when we're supporting the businesses, and people get mad at us. And so we're, we're contending with, and we try to explain zoning, we try to explain what's going on with Sacramento, we try to explain those kinds of things, but, you know, it's, it's better to, it's better to bring these things out into the open, and we want to be a city that is open to business. I mean, as, as Commissioner Lanson said, it's not the best use for that to be sitting there vacant, and the fact that you guys are willing to invest in the community, even with these conditions now, is, is admirable, and, and we're grateful you're here. So I will support the motion.
Commissioner Bass.
First off, I appreciate you coming to our community and wanting to do business here, and I have experienced Raising Canes. The biggest thing, I live in this area, and I go to that shopping center probably on a weekly basis to go to Best Buy, there's a total line there. I see the comment from Ross as well. I also have lived in the valley, San Fernando Valley, where the In-N-Out lines are, you know, down the street, so queuing is very important, and I actually had to do a study on queuing in my MBA program, so I guess now I'm using that. But I hear what you're saying about perception, but I do think that what the city is requiring for someone that lives there and does walk through that shopping center, that we are mindful of making it easy for people to get in and out, and you guys are a lot busier. I mean, Amy's stayed open three months, right? And, you know, by your own admission, you guys are going to be busier, you are fast, but that line is still going to be there, because I think you're also pretty affordable. So there's a lot of people that come from other areas to work in this community, plus we have college students, and we have the high school down the street, so, I mean, I, that would be my greater concern. I understand the part with the, the infrastructure investment, but I do feel you guys are going to make it back in our community, so I support, approve the motion.
Great, thank you. I, I too will support the motion. I think that my comments primarily were about, initially about the general plan consistency is, we have made our effort into making this area for between Moore Park and the Oaks Mall kind of an area where we really want to start investing into a true mixed-use pedestrian-friendly area, and a drive-through is one of those sets of policies that we're trying to figure out how to discourage. I think the circumstances on this particular site, in this particular thing, are a little bit different, and for that reason, because it's kind of not new, I can get comfortable with making a general plan consistency finding, which is one of the things we need to do here. I think the commitment of resources and time to the dedication of making Raising Canes a reality in this area, I think, is a demonstration of the commitment to the community, and I'm sure the community will reciprocate by patroning the area once it opens up, so. When, when are you going to open up, do you think? I'm a little hungry, and maybe, 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 maybe that's, maybe that's all it is, but for that reason, I'll support them. No need. So I'll support the motion. Commissioner Lanson, any final comments? If not, Secretary could please call the roll.
Commissioner Bass?
Or perv?
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Commissioner McMahon absent.
Thank you. If there's any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal to Planning Commission's decision, may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within ten days. Thank you.
Didn't know if Commissioner McMahon made it back. I'm not seeing her, so I guess not.
All right. Next, we'll go to eight A. Tonight, we have a department report on the zoning code update municipal code amendment, MCA-2025-70001, and Zone Change Z-2025-07001, presenting on behalf of staff, is Planning Manager Kristen Rice.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to head, go ahead and provide a little brief intro before I hand it over to our consultant team. So here are the requests and the recommendations for this evening. We're here tonight to provide a department report and status update on the progress of the comprehensive zoning code update to Chapter Four of the Title IX, which includes an update to the sign code, and also the remainder of the rezoning program and the new zoning map. You have received of the result of the code audit with the findings and recommendations memo in your packet as Attachment One, and we would recommend that you find this action tonight. And we would recommend that you find this action tonight is not a project as defined under CEQA. This project is a critical first step in implementing the vision and policies that were adopted as part of the new general plan and is the first implementation item actually referenced in the plan under LU-A1. Much like the general plan, which had never been comprehensively updated, either has the zoning code. To assist us with this effort, the city hired Lisa Wise Consulting, a firm with extensive experience in zoning and sign code updates, both here in the state and nationally. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and introduce, to my right is Catherine Slama, who is a director and project manager with the firm. And to my left is Ethan Stan, and he is a lead associate. And they're going to provide an update on the project status, the project process to date, and what our next steps are. So if you'll give us a moment, we're going to click out of this presentation and go over to theirs. Okay. I think we should be all set. Okay, great, thanks. Good evening, members of the commission. As Kristin noted, my name is Catherine Slama. I'm a director at Lisa Wise Consulting, the consulting firm that is working with the city on the comprehensive zoning code and sign code update project. And also noted with me tonight is Ethan Stan. We have a large team at LWC working on this project. We have two of us here this evening. We are here, as noted, to provide an update on the progress on the zoning code update thus far. So here is our agenda for this evening. We'll provide an overview of the project, talk about the community input received to date and the overall community engagement process for the project. We'll provide an overview of the findings from our technical assessment and the key recommendations to update the city's zoning code. Then we'll briefly touch on next steps. So as noted, the project that we're here to talk about this evening is an update to the zoning code. This is Title IX, Chapter 4 of the city's municipal code. We will be addressing zones, design, land uses, procedures, and sign regulations. Other components of Title IX are not included in this project. The large purpose of this project is to implement the 2023 general plan and all of the new policies adopted by council for how the city should look and feel and grow into the future. We are also ensuring that the code complies with, well, it does everything it can and should do to align with legal requirements for the state and provide best set of user-friendly, easy-to-understand rules and procedures to guide development and decision-making for the City of Thousand Oaks. So why are we doing this? Well, the adoption of the general plan is a very important catalyst, but also the code is very old, from the 1970s. And lots has changed since then, as everyone could imagine. How much has changed in how we think and feel about cities, how much the City of Thousand Oaks itself has changed. So the city is keeping up with state law, but it also needs a little bit of help. It needs a refresher, and this project is the opportunity to do that. Just a little bit of a reminder about zoning for those here tonight and anyone listening in. Zoning is the tool that is the most effective in supporting the desirable outcomes of the city in implementing the general plan. In the land use element of the general plan, it regulates what uses are allowed and where, how big and how tall those buildings can be, and some components of those building designs. It also talks about how much parking, how much landscaping is required, open space, fencing, signs, other components of site development and design. But zoning is effective, but it's also limited in a certain extent. Out of a list of uses that are allowed, zoning cannot control which specific use or specific company goes into a particular site. Zoning doesn't change other parts of the municipal code. Zoning in this project will not alter staffing resources or dictate positions at the city. And the zoning code update does not change adopted policy. So the policy sets the direction. Zoning code implements that direction. So what does the process for updating a code look like? This is kind of a once-in-a-career opportunity. Cities don't do this very frequently because it is such a large undertaking. We have outlined and worked with the city to develop a approximately 18- to 20-month timeline from start to finish. We kicked off the project with staff in December of 2024, and the bulk of the work began this past January with a heavy six-month analysis phase, analysis and understanding all of the issues and opportunities to improve zoning regulations within the city. So we'll present some of the key findings from that assessment later in this presentation. And we are now entering the drafting phase, where we will begin to make revisions in alignment with the assessment findings and recommendations. We are targeting a release of the draft code in early 2026, where it will be available for public review, commission review, council review. The city and team are looking to adopt the code next spring. LWC has a lot of experience in code development, but the work we do is really driven by the community and the communities we are working with. So there are a variety of ways in which the LWC and city team are seeking to involve the community perspective throughout the 18-month process. There are four workshops as part of the scope of work for the code update. We've already held two of those, one in March and one of May of this year. There are four meetings with appointed and elected officials. There's also hearings for adoption. And then, on an ongoing basis, staff is providing updates via website, social media, as well as notices via newsprint as appropriate. Engagement with the community and leadership runs throughout, and it's time to align with specific opportunities to provide input into the work product, as well as time to provide the team and the consultant the opportunity to educate the community and learn about the proposed changes. So it's a constant cycle of inflow and outflow of information between the consultant and the community. We have been working with the city and the community for several months now, and there are a few themes that have been really dominant in what we've been hearing at our workshops and through our involvement with the city and staff as well. So number one, there's a lot of conversation about housing, diversity, affordability, as well as the importance of design and scale and context of that new housing. So it's appropriate in respect to the relationship in this context to the existing neighborhoods, particularly new housing and mixed use. So how do those new buildings address the scale and context of their adjoining neighbors? Heard a lot about parking and connectivity and walkability. These are big themes of the general plan. Protection of views, open space and the associated natural environment, as well as natural amenities. The city offers a lot of great access to open space and visual amenities, and these are policies adopted in the general plan. And so where possible, they'll be preserved and maintained through various zoning tools. We've also heard a lot about the process, and the community wants to continue to be engaged in the process and understand what's going on in the city, as well as how to participate. And earlier in May of this year, the team presented the findings of the assessment that we'll go through tonight and held a public workshop. At this workshop, some key topics were discussed, some of them being the importance of calibrating and addressing citywide standards like lighting and signs to address policy direction for mixed use in new development in existing neighborhoods. So understanding how, as buildings, as we develop infill buildings, and maybe they're a little bit taller than their neighbors, what are some of the visual impacts of lighting and signs on some of the adjacent properties? The code, as noted by the community at Workshop 2, has a lot of opportunity to be a little bit more user-friendly. There's a lot of conversation about simplifying text, getting rid of jargon, utilizing more tables and more graphics to explain concepts, cross-referencing between different sections, and overall improvement, so everyone can use the code and understand what the code allows. Design and flexibility should be considered together. So as the community wants consistency in high-quality outcomes of new development, there's also a need to be flexible so that the code remains long-lasting and enduring as times change, so to accommodate change over time and not be overly prescriptive. So there's this balance between predictability and flexibility that has been talked about with the community. So earlier this spring, the team completed our independent technical assessment of the code. This is available and has been available online, and it was discussed at the May workshop. This memo serves to disclose the identified opportunities to improve the code and the preliminary recommendations of the consultant team. The memo is served to be transparent, so what are the issues and why, and how could we address them? It's not going to catch everything, and it may be, there may be more to address that's discovered through the engagement process, meetings with the public, meetings with the commission, as well as meetings with city council. The memo documents the team's findings across six key topics: the general plan, policy review, a general zoning analysis, a legal consistency review, evaluation of the city's specific plans, objective design standards review, as well as a sign code analysis. So the exercise really is not to judge the policies or laws of the city, but to evaluate if the code is doing what it can and what it should do to further these policies and as it's mandated to by aligning with laws. So I'm going to go through some of the key findings, but there are more findings that are available in the memo itself. First, the prioritization of the general plan policy review. It goes without too much elaboration. There is a really well-thought-out set of policies in the 2023 general plan, and the code does not address this fully. There's a lot of opportunity to improve how the code addresses key policies related to connectivity, as well as the zone standards themselves, as well as allowed land uses. So we'll get into that in just a moment here. Also, there are several specific plans that exist within the city that date back to the 60s. They're built out and not necessarily an effective tool. It may not be needed, so we've identified some opportunity to simplify the relationship of the specific plans and the general plan and the zoning code. And then, as noted from the community itself, our independent assessment also noted that there's some opportunity for general ease-of-use improvements, some better format, and some improvements to the navigation of the chapter. So the city has a variety of zones, which contain their own sets of development standards and allowed land uses, and these rules dictate what projects are allowed to be within each of those zones, as the commission is quite aware. So where those zones get mapped dictates the rules for that certain area. One of the analogies that I consistently use throughout all of our planning engagements is the relationship of zones themselves to the zoning map. So I like to think about zones as the palette of colors and your map as the coloring book, right? So the city has an adopted policy, the general plan land use map, of what you want and where you want it. Right now, the city's zoning code does not have an adequate palette of colors to color in the map, in the zoning map, the way that you want to see things done. There are some missing shades of residential. There's not the right palette of commercial zones to really implement all of the general plan land use designations that the city has adopted. And there's, in addition to not having the right set of zones or the right suite of zones or palette of colors, there are additional standards that could be addressed and improved in the zones themselves, or some missing, not necessarily missing information, but there's some opportunity to add more detail and more information in those zones to produce better outcomes. In addition to the zones and the standards for building size and placement, we also looked at how the code regulates use, so what's inside of that building. The current use table is extremely detailed, too detailed even. It calls out things like stationary stores and variety stores. And so there's a lot of opportunity to group similar uses to simplify that table. The reason this has been identified as a problem, because it makes it difficult to accommodate new uses in the city over time and to maintain compliance and consistency with the modern economy. There's a lot of uses that are very specific and detailed and nuanced that we didn't think about 10, 20 years ago. So a more generalized land use table can help the city accommodate change and best practices and innovation in use regulation over time. Also, the objective design standards accomplish a lot and improve the predictability of multifamily and multifamily mixed-use projects in the city. Whoever does, from our design review, look like there is some room to improve the building standards and address some of that transition space between the new project coming in and what's already established. So really, that transition zone between new buildings and the existing context in the existing neighborhoods. From an administrative perspective, there's a lot of procedures within the code that could be cleaned up and simplified. There is some information that is kind of difficult to find. You have to be a code expert or a regular daily user of the TO code to understand what is required. And I'll say, after, you know, decades in this industry, this is still a very challenging code even for the LWC staff to interpret. So there's some definite improvement that can be done from a structural standpoint and a navigation standpoint. And additionally, there's some opportunity to accommodate flexibility, which is good, right? There could be some clear direction for decision-makers, including the planning commission, right? So there's an opportunity for us to explicitly outline the applicability of different approval authorities and the threshold for different modifications, minor modifications, major modifications, and the ability to exercise discretion. So along with identifying issues and opportunities, the team did outline recommendations for improvements. So to ensure that the city has the right palette of zones, we recommend creating new or modifying existing zones to ensure that there is one zone for each general plan land use designation. So some zones, like the R1 or the R3 zone, need some updates to ensure that they align with the densities and the allowed uses of the general plan. But there are some other gaps, some colors that are missing, like medium-density residential and those medium-density neighborhood categories, where we need to create a new zone to ensure alignment with the general plan. The team has worked with the city to develop an improved structure to the chapter that helps group like or similar content under a common division. So this is a new proposed element of the code structure. It allows the code to grow and accommodate amendments and new content of the code into the future without having to tack new things on at the end, right? So as the city's been adopting new content over time, we've been adding it towards the end, because we run out of numbers and sequences in the chapter structure as it exists today. The new proposed structure really allows to grow within the middle of a code to make sure that similar content remains grouped together. It helps with usability, it helps with navigability, and it also helps with cross-referencing. And there's also a lot of opportunity to write, to add more tables and charts and graphics to explain components and new concepts. The city has a lot of effective guidance on development, some of which currently lives outside of the code in guidelines. So we recommend consolidating information from multiple sources into the code and providing objective language to ensure continued compliance with state law for residential approvals. We also recommend adding images and graphics and definitions to the objective design standards component of the code. So in direct response to the issues with the land use table, we recommend a reorganization and a modernization update to the land use table. We can consolidate- We can consolidate, modernize, simplify, and group uses. There's an example on this slide of some, not all from Thousand Oaks, but some opportunities of commonly overly detailed uses and how they can be grouped based on their level of impact and the type of use that they are without getting overly specific. This allows the code to remain adaptable over time. And additionally, we also recommend providing supplemental standards for uses subject to special use permits. This can help guide decision-making and predictability for the public to accommodate operational performance and site design standards for uses that have the potential to need a little bit more review. For example, we could talk about alcohol retailers, animal keeping, accessory uses, and things like that. And we do recommend a reorganization of permits, procedures, and permissions to group them all together. A lot of the information is currently located in multiple chapters and sections of the code. This is to ensure that each permit approval is complete with all of the necessary information regarding hearings, noticing, conditions of approval, and findings. We will clarify the thresholds of applicability for each of the permits. There's a lot of exceptions and a lot of various tiers of review based on different types of projects, whether they go through a precise plan of design, where they go through architectural design review, and some of that can be cleaned up and simplified so it's really clear for the applicant to know what each project is subject to and the thresholds for all of the decision-making. Lastly, an update to the sign regulations to ensure that all sign regulations are content-neutral per federal case law. We also will incorporate guidelines similar to the objective design standards, incorporate sign-related guidelines, and make them objective for clear approval criteria. We'll recommend providing missing standards and addressing newer missing sign types. We've heard about awning signs and banner signs that are not clearly outlined in the development code today. Also adding standards for best practices and addressing modern topics such as logos, lettering, sign programs, different types of illumination, and very clearly and explicitly state the types of signs which are prohibited or not allowed in the city of Thousand Oaks. So what's next in 2025? So tomorrow, we will be providing an update to the city council. We're going through the recommendations and assessment as well. The next meetings will be on the public review draft, so when the draft, we'll move after these series of meetings this week, we'll move into the drafting, and we work through preparation of a draft zoning code that we hope to have released in early 2026, at which point we'll then take that to additional meetings with the commission, council, and public workshops. For more information, the community can visit the project website, where materials and information are available, past and upcoming events, past workshop information, summary notes, presentations, and any of the project deliverables. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. First off, I just wanted, for the record, welcome Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you.
For being able to join us today, so that's great. Any comments or questions of staff? Come on, Commissioner Landsman.
I can't let that go. Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. So this seems like a movie sequel to the general plan update that's going to take, it looks like, another year? Would that be accurate to say?
That could be, that could be accurate. Maybe not quite as long, hopefully not as long as another year, but it's definitely the sequel.
And we hope that in the next year, the state does not pass a whole bunch of new laws that would require us to then go back to the drawing board?
We'll keep an eye out for them.
Thank you.
Do you have any? Commissioner Bus, Commissioner McMahon?
I did have some questions. First of all, I was heartened by many of the items that were listed in the community input and engagement areas because they're things that I tend to remember from what people in the city really are very invested in why they live here. One of them, fundamentally, it's about the natural character of the Canal Valley. I mean, it's one of the things that I think everybody really, really wants to protect. That's the reason why we have oak tree and landmark tree protections. It's also one of the reasons why we, I think, have been very averse to sign proliferation, no billboards, very small monument signs, so I'm keen to understand the details of how we implement that consistent with the court rulings to ensure that we're content-neutral on all of those, so just want to make sure that those are, the details match what we want to see continue in the community. You did mention that specific plan, I noticed, like, there's maybe a recommendation that some specific plans might be opportunities for retirement, kind of moving them into a general zoning category. Those are already built out. Others, I'm assuming, and there are specifics in some of these that we would want to keep in place because we do this, I'll be wanting to see the details of that, too, but I think what's been presented is a good guide for which ones you're thinking about. The mixed-use designation, I'm also genuinely very interested in how we choose to go and implement that. We did have a case earlier in which we sort of had to make a decision about whether this drive-through was really a new drive-through or anything else, and we do have some general plan policies that we want to help really encourage that migration of, especially, I'm very interested in this, I've always thought this is the most natural downtown area, is this area of the, between Moore Park and the Oaks, and it's been there for decades, and it's really a place where I think it can have vibrancy for the growth of Thousand Oaks. So want to see that, if those policies are what we have in place, how we go about implementing those for future decisions. There is also, one thing I'm genuinely wanting to see also is for the decisions on how we approve things in the city, there is this balance of ensuring that we allow for efficiency yet still have public engagement. I know in the earlier decades of the city, I would say many decisions got made in this chamber at city council meetings and planning commission meetings, and I know that probably we're in a point where we want to be more efficient, and that helps out, but we don't want that to be so disengaged that people don't know how they can have input, so something I just want to kind of look out for. A few questions I have, you did mention about maybe not enough palettes that we have in the zoning. I'm assuming, and correct me if the mistake is sort of, we've added gradation in our general plan designations, and our zoning code currently doesn't keep up with that, and that's what you're referring to? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Which seems like it's anticipated based upon our general plan update. For any of our overlay zones that have, like, protected ridge lines and things like that, are those still going to be in place and part of our overall zoning palette?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. And then, my last question is, there was a note, we talked about Title IX, Section 4, which is the zoning part, and we talked about a new coding structure or numbering structure. I'm assuming, we're going to have to do that for the whole code. It's not just going to be, is there going to be a new numbering system but just for the zoning one?
Right now, it's just going to be for Chapter 4.
Okay, so we're still going to have, like, Section 1-13 dot 06 or whatever, okay?
For other titles, yes, and for the remainder of Title IX.
What's the thought of having those two different kind of?
Well, so Chapter 4, I think compared to other chapters in Title IX, is updated more frequently usually. That's usually where you have most state legislation coming in, so it is really important that, at least right now, we have the ability to update this code with the structure and then allow for us to make future amendments easier. We have spoken with the city clerk, she has talked to the codifier already and the publisher to make sure that we can do this division and structure, and I think perhaps as we attack other chapters as needed, then we can follow a line in those. But for right now, this is a chapter that does get updated the most, so it's important that we have a better structure and organization.
Okay, so you say the other parts of code may be updated over time, but obviously, this is the one that kind of like needs the most attention.
Correct.
Right, okay. All right, that's great. I just wanted to ask, throw a number of those things into the discussion mix as well as answer some of the questions, so. Any other questions of staff? Okay, thanks. We actually do have two public speakers, if they are still on Zoom. Kathy Atwood?
She has left the Zoom.
She's left the Zoom, okay. And Wendy Zimmerman? We can hear you.
Okay, great.
You have five minutes.
I received notice of this meeting at 2:00 this afternoon, and I've been involved in the zoning meetings, having attended the March 19th and the May 28th meetings. Both of those had pretty full houses, so I take umbrage with the numbers of members of the public who attended those meetings because I know there were more people there. And what that makes it look like is that the public doesn't care so much about this issue. We do. I am incorporating by reference a lengthy letter that I sent to the city council on December 4th, 2023, which outlines a lot of considerations that Thousand Oaks has in placing developments next to single-family homes about compatibility and heights and how things look. I think there are a lot of good ideas in that material, and I would like to see a lot of what that says stay put. With regards to the individual reports and things that have happened, at the May 28th meeting, all the people that were attending the meeting from the public, we had to do the moving around every 10 minutes instead of one person each with an easel come to each group. So they made us do the work, and it was, I think, a little rude personally. On page 14 of the 64-page document, it talks about the PPD and keeping it there, and I'm going, who is this for? I found it rather confusing. On page 20, my comment, and I apologize, these are kind of rambling a little bit because of short time to prepare, it talks about trying to strengthen things and be non, and it's more discretionary in this report. To me, this report reads like, let's put more power in the hands of the city and the developers and leave the public out of the discussion. We should be included in discussions from the beginning. It just diminishes conflicts and lets them know where we stand and what happens from our points of view, not just the developers. There is nothing in any of this that says, talks about appeals processes or an ombudsman. The city really needs an ombudsman process so that issues can be straightened out at minimal cost and time and hassle for everybody. There's no mediation, nothing. This has been a problem with Thousand Oaks for a long time, and it's not just about zoning, it's about many aspects of what the city does. Further, TO has a useless transit system. It doesn't run 24/7, it doesn't go anywhere important most of the time. You cannot rely on transit in Thousand Oaks. Therefore, you have to put in a reasonable amount of parking spaces. You can't just cut them out and say, well, because a bus comes past within a half mile of your residence once a day that you have transit. That doesn't work, it's inadequate, it's irresponsible, and until TO gets a reasonable transit system that truly functions for the benefit of many, not just a few, you can't cut down on parking, and the parking from the projects will flow out into neighborhoods that are already filled with people who park in front of their homes, and our streets are narrow. They're old, they cannot handle thousands and thousands of people every day. I find this a lot discouraging. The residential transitions that are proposed next to things, a few trees and a berm will not protect the privacy and quiet enjoyment of single-family homes when there are five-story buildings and thousands of people living next door. It doesn't work, it's inadequate. I think they need to go back to the drawing board and work much harder on this, and having been part of the process and expecting to continue to be part of the process, I really think there needs to be a lot more consideration for the public and the existing residential folks, and I know you want to grow, but, you know, on the other hand, if deportations keep increasing, we won't need to grow as fast and as much. I'm not happy about the way that is being done whatsoever, but the reality is California's population may be decreased, and maybe the state is jumping the gun a bit much, or we just need to plan for backing off a bit and seeing what really happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from staff?
Just want to say that we appreciate Ms. Zimmerman's comments. Some of them were highlighted in the presentation tonight, and we heard some of those from some other members of the public as well. I'll take note of the comments regarding the public workshop, and we'll take another look about how we organize that for the next time. There's a couple other items that were mentioned. We haven't made any, we haven't proposed anything necessarily yet, just identified some of the issues that she also mentioned. I think, was there any, was there others?
Yes, just a couple things, Chair, that you mentioned at the beginning, I think, with respects to sign regulation and the impact of the federal case law, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. We have not, as Kristen mentioned, we have not made a decision or developed a sign code. However, you know, the court case does not address sign size, so as long as the content itself can be regulated without having to read the text on the sign, the city maintains the ability to regulate and limit the size of signs, the number of signs, as long as it's applied consistently on a zone basis rather than a particular use basis. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there to work with the community to preserve the beauty of the city and limit the visual impact and kind of noise of too many signs. You had mentioned a comment about specific plans. There are 18 adopted specific plans in the city, and the assessment report does talk about which ones have been identified. It is predominantly some of the older specific plans, Wildwood, Lang Ranch, those date back to the mid to late '60s. Some of the newer ones, especially those that are in progress and not yet built out or not yet developed, we are not recommending addressing those or touching those. There's a lot of activity still going on in the city. Those specific plans continue to maintain a purpose and have a strong role. And then I was going to kind of note one other thing. I might also go to say that from, to Ms. Zimmerman's comment about transitions, we would agree that there's a lot of opportunity to do more than just landscaping when we're addressing the transitions between buildings, and that's one of the things that we're looking at through the objective design standard work. It has a lot to do with the placement of buildings and how windows align, so we do want to do justice on that topic that was mentioned.
Okay, any questions of staff? There was just one comment, I think I had forgotten, just to put on the record, about the sign proliferation. One of the things that the community cares about is illumination of signs, so just want to make sure that that's part of the consideration that we have here, so. Comments? No? If not, I think we're done, so we can open the floor for a comment or a motion. Commissioner McMahon?
So do we need to adopt this, move to adopt the resolution? Is that what we're doing here?
Yeah, so there's a three-part request to find it's not a project, to receive the update, and receive the assessment memo.
Okay, so I move that we find that this action is not a project as defined under the California environment. the California Environmental Quadia Act, Guidelines Section 15387B, 5, CCR Title 14, Chapter 3, Article 20, receive update on the comprehensive zoning code update, sign code update and rezoning program, and receive assessment and recommendations memo prepared by LeaseWise Consulting. And just as an aside, I know I'm very late and I apologize, but my husband was driving through the traffic and I watched the whole thing, so I did get your presentation and I did see the first project, and I, and I do want to apologize to my fellow commissioners and to staff, but I did, I did watch, so there you go.
The blessings of the internet. Any comments to the motion? If not, Secretary, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Now it's time for Commission comments and/or any AB 1234 reports. Are there any comments from our fellow commissioners? Commissioner Lanson?
Sorry to keep raising my hand. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to welcome Assistant City Attorney Noel Dorn to the DIAS and to Planning Commission, and we welcome your knowledge and legal expertise, and I apologize if there's anything I do that ultimately is going to require that you have that discussion with me. With that said, I also wasn't here last month, and I want to give a huge thank you to our Chief Assistant City Attorney, Patrick Heehere, who eight years ago, when I started on the commission, handed me a box full of documents and with a straight face said, "Read every word and understand it." And he meant it. He was a very, very knowledgeable guy, very gracious. I've worked with him on lots of different projects. He worked for the city for 20 years, and I think we were very, very fortunate to have him, and I just wanted to thank him and make sure I, he knew he was appreciated. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other comments? If not, we'll go to Ms. Zalaya Miliker. Are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Thank you, Chair. Tomorrow evening at city council meeting, there will be a public hearing on Senate Bill Nine, the ordinance related to urban lot splits and two-unit housing developments, which was considered by the planning commission on May 19th, 2025, and a department report on the comprehensive zoning code, similar to the update you received this evening. On September 9th, there will be a public hearing on community development, block rent, consolidated annual performance, and evaluation report, the CAPR for short, and second reading of Senate Bill Nine ordinance, which will be on consent calendar. Upcoming items for Planning Commission, on September 8th, there will be a public hearing for the Conejo Summit Project, the 15 industrial buildings for railways, parking infrastructure, and landscaping, and approximately 50 acres at generally located at Conejo Center Drive and Rancho Conejo Boulevard. And on September 22nd, there will be a public hearing on life entertainment at Naboo Wines at 2649 Towns Gate Road, Unit 200. And this is, this concludes the upcoming items. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. We now adjourn to our next meeting September 8, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.